I have a motion to adopt the agenda as.
So.
Motion as Jeff, second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Do you have celebrations with your guys' reports, or do you want to do them first?
I'll just do the reports.
Okay. Reports, business manager.
Don't have much. They're brought down with my audit and I did get all my customer stuff closed. We're never gonna be worried.
Alright, thank you. High school middle school principal.
Just a couple of celebrations to start with. A issues team, Paul Piper State, and went out to Rapid City last weekend, or weekend, two weekends ago. They did well out there. I mean, all places trying to remember the Orland Turp, but they did very well. They had tough competitions, it said, so had a good time. Orland Turp team went out to state this past weekend to Sturgis and the Reader's Theater got a superior gold medal. And Kendall, did you see that? Was one point away from getting an gold medal, so that wasn't satisfying enough for Kendall, but we thought that was still a really good accomplishment for her. So, and I just want to say thank you to the coaches for their hard work there. And then obviously, the congrats to the runner up for policy. Coaches that are called that, so a lot of celebrations there. We met with us here on CTE a couple of weeks ago. We have a minimum of five spots, which you might have been aware of that already with the grant. This is something we're gonna have to continue to kind of work through throughout the year. I'm probably gonna build our schedule and then fit it in because it didn't sound like their schedule would be ready until March. And April, so that's gonna be, this first year is gonna be kind of working through some of those. They were supposed to do a meet training, a meet trailer training tomorrow, but that got canceled because then they had to come in and do an inspection on the trailer before they can do that, so that's gonna be postponed to January. The small engines is gonna happen as a training soon. I think that's maybe the beginning of January also, but they should be able to get through that. So we will get a trailer for four weeks this year.
Yeah, this long.
Yeah, about a month, yeah, yeah. So, but that's, that's a good thing. We'll have an opportunity. We have one spot guaranteed. We could take one spot in any class, and then if they have, then we could possibly get to. We'll work through that. No tardy November, I don't know if you've heard about it or if you saw the newsletters, but it was actually, I thought, very successful in the high school. In October, I kind of put the stats in there, but we had twenty-nine students that had two or more tardies, some of them with multiple, multiple tardies. And this was reduced to eleven students, and I think three of the eleven only had two tardies. So I thought great success. I'm testing something in December, so we'll see if, if the behavior was learned or if the behavior was just reworked. So we're working on that. Six week twelve concert will be Thursday, starting at six thirty. Basketball wrestling are getting started, sideline cheer, got all those rosters ready today. We're working on a service project for December twentieth for the middle school and high school students to participate in before. So at the beginning of the day, we're gonna try to do a service project on that Friday and then proceed with. Tript High School is gonna have some trivia from the leadership class, so, and then we'll plan on middle school, what we're gonna do there. But hoping to get that arranged this week. Reminder, we are gonna switch schedules for the middle school students after winter break. Instead of having two classes in a row with a staff member or with a teacher, they'll interchange more like high school where they go to a different class each hour. We got a zoo mobile from the Great Plains Zoo for middle school. It was part of title one grant that was free. They asked if they could come, and I'm like, yeah, we'll take it, you know? So they bring in animals and do a presentation for the kids. And so, I don't know, we're gonna try it. So I, I, I've experienced, I've been in one of these presentations before with students, and it's, it's really neat for them to see the snakes and whatever else, you know, don't tell Mrs. Martin's that. But they're coming on Monday for the middle school students, so. Blood drive will be here to Wednesday for La Costa. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, and then winter formal Friday, so. Student council will serve pizza, seven to eight-ish supper and pictures, and then dance will start around eight and end at ten. And I have one person that is chaperoning, but if anybody else wants to volunteer to chaperone, I'll take a couple more, you know? So, but the kids are, I think, looking forward to get a sign up meeting. Should be a fun night, so. Basketball wrestling, full swing, and on Friday, we met about the attendance policy. I've visited with our attendance committee to work out the attendance policy for next semester. And one thing that wasn't on here, we did purchase window coverings and made sure every room had curtains for our sheltering place. Any questions?
Alright, well, I think we had most of the celebrations.
Sorry.
Esports is starting up good, huh? So, that's good. How many kids you got for that?
Four kids.
Four kids, so got that going on. Principal wise, we'll do testing this week and next week. It's gonna be some what works best for the teachers, and then when we get back, we're gonna start going through standards. So a big thing for me is hitting our standards, so not so much teaching our book, but hitting the state standards because that is what goes on to our assessments. So making sure not just teach our book, a lot of these programs are built for fifty states. Now fifty states have different standards, so really find out what standards we've been hitting, what we've been missing, and then kind of going over, changing the sequences of classes to just keep building through the year. So we'll, they'll work as great, with their different grade levels. So just put that process going into next year, so we'll start that this spring here. Concert, Christmas concert went very well. Thank you, Mrs. Lacy and then staff for putting it all together. We had a lot of people there. Don't tell the firemen, so. And then last week, we had the bug night. We had over a hundred and two, a hundred and twenty people show up. So again, a great turnout, and thank all the teachers that showed up, and then Mrs. Sports, we wanted to put that on, so it was awesome. Superintendent wise, we already talked about the CTE meeting. We had our family chat with elementary, middle school, and high school. Those went very well. You think those went well? So we got a lot of good information on that, and then we'll share that data moving forward. This week, we have our spend review, so that's just an internal review for our spend, just to make sure that, alright, IP's are good. Making sure that everything is right, so we got that Thursday. Last week, I went to the legislative meeting, very interesting. If you guys didn't watch, this is known. Kind of the big things educational wise that I got out of there is the vouchers. So she put four million dollars into the budget, so they've been fighting this bill for a long time, and finally she found a way around it, and so she just put it into the budget. So that's cheap that I gave you guys the education savings account. So that will go to a thousand people, and they're gonna get three thousand dollars per kid. So whether they want to homeschool, private school, that money will go towards that. I can tell you right now, the big talk there was that private schools don't want it. There has been no private school that's come out and said, yep, I want a voucher system. There's been nothing, it's been quiet, so that was interesting to me. Because I think the big thing they're having in Iowa right now, and so if these families apply, they get this three thousand dollars. Well, if tuition's fifteen, they just move it to eighteen, so they're still paying the same amount, but it doesn't move up to the families. So there's no, like, gap that's met with it moving up. So if you can afford it, you can afford it, if you can't, you can't, so. There'll be a one point two-five percent increase in the budget for education this year. And then the other two things, where they're trying to come up with, I don't know if they're gonna do a law or what they're gonna do with coaching and teaching contracts. As of right now, they are tied together, so if you have somebody on a coaching contract that you want to get rid of, it has to also go through their teaching contract, so it's kind of a weird deal. But, so they're trying to get something with the state with that, to come up with something. And then there will be budget cuts to dual credit. They didn't specify what or what they're gonna do with it, but all it says is dual credit. So we'll figure that more out in January and February, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Nothing from the central board. Did you committee reports?
Nothing from committee. I attended that AES, BES, D meeting, and that was an uber disappointment. It was my first ever, had little higher expectations going in, but basically just sat there with the yellow card and raised it with everybody else in the room twenty-five times, and that was the end of it. There was very little discussion on anything, and it pretty much just went down and approved everything that was in the book that they sent out. But they did talk about one of the things on, like, this voucher program and, you know, the AES, BES, D is very much against any tax money going to private schools. They updated some policy in there. Otherwise, it was not earth shattering for my opinion.
Okay, there are motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie. From second.
Second.
Mason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. New and unfinished business. Motion to change the procedure for policy readings to being able to be approved, to approve with first reading.
So all this does is make it so, once we, you have the policy, you talk about it, if there's any changes that you want on there, then you make those changes, but you still approve it just at that meeting, so it doesn't have to go through a two-month process of trying to get it, when most of the time, you already know that you're gonna put the policy in or not. And so you can just make changes to it, and then it will be accepted.
I guess I would make a motion, it seems to make sense to me. I thought you just had to do that, like, that was a.
See, we did too, but, you know.
Yeah, it was on a court meeting, and they did it there, and so somebody else asked about it, and they were like, no, we changed that in our bylaws. So, I replied, I said.
It seems to save a lot of redundancy.
Yes.
And I did ask Mr. Freeman, and he said it's fine. Okay, I have a motion by Jeff. Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Policy for attendance and wait room.
You want that wait room?
Jeff, Ashley.
I have attendance for, okay, so the attendance committee and I met on Thursday, and then, like I said, I met with the teachers on Friday. We went through it, the, the, the policy that was posted online was last devised in twenty sixteen, according to, that's what I had. I, I looked at our handbook, and I tried to adapt handbook and the policy that was online to what I think would be most beneficial for our students and staff. We have, we have some students that we need to get, you know, get our finger on to get them here in school, and so we're hoping that maybe this will help. I, I'm not super happy about making a change like this in the middle of the year for an attendance policy because I think that that's difficult sometimes, but I would do my best to get it out to the parents and let them know what the changes are. The beginning part there is, you know, talking about the importance of attendance and why it is, yes, a lot of the activities can be made up outside of class, but it's important that we have them here so they get the classroom discussion, and there's a lot that can be learned in those experiences. And so, talks about that. School attendance and tardiness, number one, the, right now in the handbook, it does say before eight-thirty, school starts at eight-ten. So that's giving, I know that care leaders, our office personnel are usually here at seven-thirty, so they have an hour to call in if their student or if their child is going to be absent, or they can email, or send a note, so if they know they're gonna be gone the day before, they can do that. If they don't call, then Mrs. Zomer does a good job of calling parents because we want to know where those students are, you know? It's important that we try to follow up and make contact to know what's going on there. If they are not contacted, if they can't get ahold of them, then we would assign an unexcused absence at that point. Students, oh, I already see a mistake. That should say ten. Students who arrive at class ten minutes, I missed that, because that's in our handbook, ten minutes, so we give them ten minutes for a tardy. Do you see that? On letter A, the last sentence there, students who arrive at class ten or minute, more minutes late would be counted as absence. Okay, so we give them the ten minutes for the tardy, our tardy makeup is ten minutes, so that kind of goes hand in hand. If requested, students that are absent for any reason shall submit, we could ask them to submit written form there. But six or more absences in a semester are considered excessive. Mr. Donovan and I looked at it, and we thought seven is about the ten percent in a four-day week. So we said six would be considered excessive at seven, if you kind of go to, it's later in the interventions, but you'll see where seven will come into play. So on the second page, letter B there, this is what we've been using this year, so I don't want, I'd like to continue using that in our office. The descriptions and how it's recorded in each, in the infinite campus. So an absence excused, an illness, and an absent unexcused count for those six absences. A doctor's note does not, an activity does not, an administrative approval does not, and then a recognized youth event, for instance, four-H state fair, you know, students, if they're attending that, then that would be categorized there. The nice thing about having these categories is that when I run the reports in infinite campus, it, I can choose them, and those are the absences that come up then. So I, I like the way that that was put into place. Number two, I have contemplated this, we talked with the teachers, we had the word may in there when I talked with the attendance committee, and the teachers really felt that may was too great. They wanted it either, if it's unexcused, they lose points for that day. Okay, if, I do want to add the line, though, that the administration retains the authority to adjust or waive because if, if, for instance, a death in the family or an emergency takes place, and sometimes, as a parent, my brain might not be on calling a student out for something, that would give me, as an administrator, the, the ability to not have them lose points for that. But this way, the teacher will automatically, if it's unexcused, it comes up as a red absence, they would lose points for that day's work. They don't have work, they don't have work, they didn't lose points. But if they had work that was assigned that day, they wouldn't, they wouldn't receive the credit for that. That's it on an unexcused absence only, okay? Communication, this is where I really wanted some guidance because we didn't have anything in play right now, and that's five, seven, and ten days within, in the semester is when I would be required to send a letter to the parents. So then I, I know this is, there's consistency there. I don't run an absence report every single day, it would probably be on a weekly, once they meet that five, seven or ten. If I could get that, then, then it creates a letter, sends it in, I have that automated in, not automated, but I have to run it, but it would put them in there for me in campus, and then I print that letter and send it to them. After seven absences, I, I may try to request a meeting with the parents. I, I have struck out on this a couple of times this year, but at least I've put some effort into trying to contact them. And then I visited with the state's attorney in Beale County, and they have a diversion program that they would like to implement if they can have a chance to. And so this would be that, at that step of seven, I would recommend them, I would refer them to the diversion program and see if they can get some help there. After ten, they will be notified, and that will be on the next page. Students will, after ten absences, you will get a zero for any absence, whether it's a doctor's note, not a doctor's note, but any absence of the three. Absent excused, ill, or, what was the other one? Absent unexcused. So those three would receive a zero. Ten absences in a four-day week is two and a half weeks. A lot of times, they'd gone out of school, so we want to try to get them here during that. After fifteen absences in a year, then we would file for a petition to the state's attorney. And that's about ten percent, like we said, of this quarter, so.
And that's law, you have to do that?
Yes, yes, that is law, so it's the same time. Makeup work, so in that section, that basically come from our handbook right now, because that's what we are following. Students have two days to make up if they miss or excuse absence. So that, that, that wasn't a change, I didn't change anything in marking the attendance for elementary. Same with middle school and high school, I thought that was fine, the way that that was rewarded in there. And, and a letter C tardiness, like you already said, there's that ten-minute thing, ten minutes late to class in the tardy one. That's what we've been following, that came from the handbook, so. Any questions on the attendance policy? I think it's important that we continue, I, I mean, continue to try to reach parents and tell them the importance of being here, especially at the high school level, you know, even middle school. They miss a lot of content when they're gone, so, and that shows. Hopefully, we can get some, like I said, if this go, if you agree to this and we get it out to the parents and, and they understand, and I will actually probably call ten of my parents, so they know what happened.
And this will go in effect?
January.
Circa twenty-five, second semester.
That's what I would like. And then if we have to revisit, we can revisit in summer or spring for the next year, if we have something. Or revisit earlier, it's really helpful, so.
If there's a problem, I guess a person has to address it. To just sit back and do nothing is, is we're not doing our jobs as leaders of the school, and I mean, that's the end game.
That's kind of what I said, you know, with the teachers, you know, if we need to do the change over and over, it's not gonna be better. If they try to change something, so we can try to approve it. I don't know if it will help or if it will hurt, but at least, maybe if we get it out, and we'll try it. Doesn't hurt to try, it's not working.
It'll, it'll hurt a bit.
Right.
We will need to change the dates in the back.
Yep, 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 I didn't change them because I didn't, I want to make sure that it's, goes through first before I, you know, before I did that. But, yep, I have that on my.
Any other questions for that? Do you have a motion to approve the absence?
I would make a motion to approve the absences with the change from fifteen minutes to ten minutes and the dates on the policy.
Perfect. Motion by Jamie, for the second.
Second.
Second by Mason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Alright, wait room.
Okay, so this is pretty easy. Would you get, the only thing I can think that you guys might want to figure out is the money, how much you want to make people pay. Does that seem fair?
That seems pretty fair.
Okay, I did a pretty big discount they do yearly. That way, it's more kind of an incentive to do that, so. But then, just having the veterans and seniors on there and hoping to, maybe we can get a couple of people that have not done something before that come up and try it out, so just trying to get people, the door is there.
So it doesn't matter if you have six people in your family or one, you can.
Correct. So that family can use it. And we can change that too. The big thing is you have to be graduated from high school to be in there. Unsupervised, that is the big thing out there. Other than that, it just talks about, I mean, everything with the access codes. They lose a key fob, can't go in other parts of the building, when they're in the fitness center, just kind of outlines everything in there, so that there's not really any questions, and then puts a little liability on them as well by signing this, so.
And this will, they will not have access to the hallway between the commons and the, that door locked?
Between?
Between the gym and the, oh, can they go into the gym?
No.
Okay, you need to take that out.
Take out the gym part?
Unless you're gonna let them in the gym. Because if you say use of school gym and fitness center, I'm going to assume I can get into the gym and the fitness.
I'll take, yep, so I'll take that out.
Okay.
Unless we want, I would say no on the fitness or the gym gym, because it's too expensive to maintain to.
Okay, I will take that out.
Is there any surveillance over there?
There's only a camera in there.
There's a camera in the fitness center and in the lobby.
Correct.
And the bathrooms are finished up there. And we can lock that door from the, from the shop to there, and there's a lock on the restroom room as well. So the only place they could go is the bathroom is to the fitness center. So, that's it. And they will be doing the drywalling during winter break, so it doesn't mess with personal practice. He'll be in there, and then after that, we'll just get it rolling. Okay with that?
Do you have set hours in here?
No, that's the, we'll have to figure out because we have powerlifting and stuff like that, too many people gonna be able to win, so. We'll have to get set hours, and then that will be part of it, and just make sure people understand, because it's gonna be ever-changing, so.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
And then I'll switch that from the, to just the fitness center.
Do you have a motion to approve the fitness and our membership policy, removing school gym from any wording?
So move.
Motion by Jeff. From the second.
Second.
Second by Herman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Our board training is December eleventh, which is Wednesday at four-thirty. I apologize it's at four-thirty, but a couple of our kids have a physical rep that night. So in order for us to beat that, I moved it up.
What do we want to have? Do I have it in here?
If you can.
You need, you need a smart board.
Is that alright, Mr. Bishop?
As long as Prometheus is okay, y'all.
Or this, or the.
I, I didn't know, but.
You just need something to be able to put up on a screen, so that should work, that's good.
I'll do it here unless I'm doing homework.
Jeff?
Perfect.
Just play it in the panel.
Okay, and you'll get an agenda posted by tomorrow?
Yes.
At four?
Okay, thank you. American Trust Insurance renewal. It's for the, I forgot my binder down there. It's for renewing the commercial, the vehicle and all that, on insurance that we always have, which is that through them, which is really through EMC, RAS is our workers' comp. EMC is really the only insurance that the schools right now, but he was telling us about how he's also part of the World Insurance Association, works out of, out of two. And there is, they're in the works of another company doing school insurances, and so he's hoping to be able to bring that, because then we'll offer some competition.
And so he's hoping to be able to bring that into, which then will offer some competition. And for next year. Otherwise, the other thing is the pool when they act, when it's too, like, a crisis, everything.
They're so rich.
So, pretty much ours went, because we're gonna go twenty grand, I think?
Fifty.
So I imagine that.
So, but...
Of course, the values went up.
Yeah.
You know?
But like, we were in the other pool, it went up a hundred percent.
Bishop?
Like, almost double what they're paying, so.
So I'm excited for the opportunity of somebody else. We, there used to be another one, Continental Western, which is, we were with and they dropped all the schools. And so then we ended up back up to EMC. So I'm interested to see what happens.
Do you have a motion in there?
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie, second, second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion to renew American Trust Insurance.
Move.
Done. Thank you. I lost my wording. Star plus bolt, track uniforms, sheet rock installation.
So our track uniforms are not, last time's track uniforms were the ones before, so it's like thirty-two tops and bottoms. And then just a little bit of sheet rock installation.
Okay?
Motion.
Motion by Jamie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Herman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This time, we'll go on to executive session, section one, personnel and, and personnel, not just personnel. So a motion at five-thirty for...
So move.
Motion by Ashley, second by Jeff. Thank you.
You wanna do personnel first?
Yeah, yeah.
So say, because then you'll be affected with that.